And if we could all please rise, the Honorable Brandon McCullough is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember McCullough. Good evening and welcome to the 1,929th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, October 4th, 2021. Would the Clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
No, present, I messed that up. Present. Oh, no, it was the roll.
You're good.
Yes.
Councilmember Donovan?
Uh, here.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Vice President Barr?
Aye, I am here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
President McIntyre?
Here. We have all seven members of the council with us this evening. At this time, we have the presentation of the minutes for the 1,928th regular meeting of the City Council that was held on September 8th, 2021.
Sub move.
Second.
Any corrections or amendments to the minutes? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on approval of the minutes from the September 8th meeting?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the minutes are approved without any amendments. At this time, we go to the council. Thank you. The meeting is now officially in session.
Madam President.
Yes, now we go to the council for any announcements or tributes. Councilmember Donovan?
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, wanted to say, go Lions tonight. We're playing the Green Bay Packers, Monday Night Football. We're both 0-1 right now, so it's fair, and I think this is gonna be a great start to a potential Super Bowl year. Looking forward to it. Go Lions.
Madam Chair. Uh, yes. Good to go? Okay. Um, I am announcing this for the Sustainability Committee. They asked me to give you this information, those of you at home and in the audience. National Drive Electric Week in Livonia on Sept—um, let's see, which date is this? This is gonna be on September 25th, from 9:00 a.m. till noon. It's out at Schoolcraft College by the Bradner Library Building, and it's a week-long of National Drive Electric Week. The Greenleaf Commission has been working with the Plug-in America Organization to organize this event. The event will allow EV owners to educate Livonia and the surrounding community on the benefits and fun of driving electric vehicles. EV owners will have 28 EV vehicles on display and represent 11 different models at the Livonia event. EV owners that have registered their EVs for this event have driven over 930,000 electric-powered miles in their vehicles. DTE and Consumers Energy will provide information on their latest EVV programs at the event, and the Greenleaf Commission welcomes everyone to visit the event and meet members of the growing electric vehicle community and learn about electric vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. Councilmember White, then Councilmember McCullough.
So, we recently lost another member of the law enforcement community. Wayne County Sheriff's Officer Devonte Jones was shot and killed while off duty. He had one child and another on the way. Our hearts go out to his family and his colleagues, and I know that the Wayne County Sheriff's Office shares in our sadness today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. Coming up, mark your calendars for October 10th. We're gonna have a charity fundraiser hockey game against the Red Wings alumni, and all proceeds are gonna benefit Livonia kids and families. We expect that the Livonia All-Stars will probably lose this event, but we're happy to know that everything will go to the Livonia kids and families. That is definitely worthy cause. So, more information, you can buy your tickets at the Livonia Rec Center, the UPS Store on Five Mile, Cardwell Florist, and then we also have everything online. So, if you're looking for a fun time on October 10th, mark your calendars and buy some tickets. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have several announcements. First of all, some happy things, we're always happy to announce. We have a happy birthday, a very special happy birthday to wish to our city treasurer, Linda Schill, who'll be celebrating on September 28th, and also to our Director of Economic Planning and Development, Mr. Mark Tarmina, who will be celebrating his birthday on October 2nd. And I have several other announcements I'd like to make. Unfortunately, Livonia lost recently two longtime members of our community who were very active at the Livonia Senior Center and at Silver Village. The first is Lorraine Walling. She was 97 years old and passed away on September 8th. And Richard Prince, he and his wife, Javita, were very, very active at the Senior Center and also active at Silver Village. So, just thinking of them and their families and thinking of all the contributions they made to our city and all the things they loved about spending their senior years in Livonia. Also, as many of you know, if not all of you, are one of our Assistant City Attorneys, Eric Goldstein, has been successfully battling glioblastoma, which is a type of brain cancer, for the last year. And Eric has put together an amazing one-man play. It was recorded, and it will start on YouTube on October 2nd at 7:00 p.m. And would encourage everyone, and maybe the City Communication Department could get this link up on the website, so people can take the opportunity to watch it. And it's about his journey from discovery of the tumor last, I think, March or April, through to being one-year-plus survivor of glioblastoma, which is pretty extraordinary. And then, the other thing I wanted to mention was a thank you to our Library Commission and Tony Laporte and several others, who I'll name in a minute, for the program they put on this past Saturday. It was part of our One Book, One City program regarding the book, The Ark of Justice, and it was a library talk Saturday morning at the Bennett Library, and the subject was the impact of historic housing discrimination on our current neighborhoods. It was moderated by Carmen Kennedy Rogers from our Human Relations Commission, and the panelists were Dez Squires from the Michigan Roundtable on Diversity and Inclusion and our own Brandy Isaacson, the Director of Housing, and also Richard Glover, the Chair of the Human Relations Commission, was there. And there was historical discussion about—the programs or lack thereof, starting with the New Deal through the GI Bill, that led to unequal housing opportunities for people of color. But Brandy Isaacson did an absolutely outstanding job of going through the very broad and very deep programs that the city of Livonia has that makes our housing accessible to as wide a group of people as possible. And Brandy's knowledge and understanding and passion for what we do in Livonia with regards to accessible housing is amazing. And I'm sorry that more people couldn't be there to hear Brandy's explanation. And she also talked about some of the changes we've made recently. Up till, I think, a year or two ago, we required folks who were on—to go on the waiting list for either Silver Village or Newburgh Village or Mac Towers to be Livonia residents. And we realized because of the demographics of Livonia, that was a de facto, de facto way of not—not being inclusive in terms of multiple backgrounds and perhaps didn't—wasn't as inclusive of people of color as we'd like it to be. And so, we removed that restriction. So, now anyone, I believe, in Wayne County can go on the list. So, it was an outstanding program, and just wanted to thank everyone who was involved and really thank Brandy Isaacson for educating everyone who was there on all the things that our city does. And I think that's it. Other than a business announcement, we have new data on item number eight, and also I'd like to announce that we will have one public hearing on October 6th regarding the 2021 and 2022 budget and property tax mileage. And would encourage everyone who's interested in the city budget and understanding where our money comes from and how the money is spent to attend—to attend that public hearing. It's always a long evening, but it's an evening that's packed with what I think is some of the most critical information, certainly for us on council and—but also for residents. And the way the budget is built, it starts with every department, and then it rolls up to the—to department level and then into one city budget, where we look at how we're gonna balance our expenditures with our available revenues.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, council—
If—I may just take a moment for kind of a personal note, if I may. This weekend, on Saturday, to be exact, the Bentley Bulldogs got together, and I won't tell you what year that was, but there was an outstanding class reunion at the Italian American Club and also over at One Under. So, a lot of business came into the community, as many of you have reunions here. I encourage you to look at those facilities and others within our community to host things like that. A lot of out-of-towners got to come back, view the school, which isn't there anymore, but you know how that goes. But anyhow, it was kind of a funny situation. Real quick, I gotta tell a story about one of my colleagues. Was in Bates Hamburgers at the carryout window, and he calls me and he says, "There's two really old gentlemen standing here, gonna order some Bates Burgers," and he had his shirt on that described who he was. And they said, "Oh, you must know Laura Toy. She's on the City Council, isn't she?" And he goes, "Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. That old woman is on the City Council with me, and—you must be coming to the reunion." So, Rob Donovan, thank you very much for taking a picture with those men, and it was quite—it was quite humorous. So, I just had to share that, lighten the mood a little bit. Thank you. Yes. Billy Brick.
Madam President.
It's a 10-year reunion, right? 10 years?
10.
I was just gonna say, Madam President, if I may—
Please, Vice President.
Councilwoman Toy, I mean, to hold a big event like that at the Italian American Club, that must have been—that must have been a really important reunion.
It was. Yes, sir.
Are you guys planning to hold your 25th at the same location?
Yes. Yes, sir, we are.
All right. Thank you, and congratulations—
Thank you.
—Councilwoman Toy on a successful and fun, it sounds like, reunion.
It was. Thank you so much.
Bulldog Nation.
Bulldog Nation, yes, ma'am.
At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce our department heads, who are here with us this evening, beginning on my left, our City Engineer, Mr. Todd Zalinsik. Next to Todd is our Director of Planning and Economic Development, Mr. Mark Tarmina. Next to Mark is our Manager of the City Council Office and City Council Business, Sarah Casperwich. Continuing to my right is our City Clerk, Susan Nash. Next to Susan is our Director of Governmental Affairs, LaShawn Thomas. Next to LaShawn is our Lead City Attorney, Mr. Paul Burnier. I see that we have Mr. Michael Slater out there, our Director of Finance, and we have a special guest, the Mayor, with us this evening. So, thank you to all of you for being here and all the work you do every week to help these meetings go as smoothly as possible. At this time, we go—we set aside half an hour for audience communication. That's where anyone who's in the audience who wishes to address the council on any item not on this evening's agenda is given an opportunity to do so. You have three minutes, and our Parliamentarian, Kathy White, usually keeps track of the time, and will let you know when you have 30 seconds left. And we ask that your meetings be relevant to city matters and respectful and avoid any personal attacks or certainly profanity. So, if anyone would like to address the council on any item not in this evening's agenda, we invite you to come to the podium at this time to do so, and we ask that you give us your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Can I please have an additional minute and a half to read a letter to the Mayor and City Council?
Madam President, I'll make the motion to support that.
I'll support that.
Any objections?
No.
We can show seven on that then, and you will have four and a half minutes.
Thank you.
And thank you for asking us at the beginning. It makes it easier and there's more continuity in your remarks, so thank you.
Thank you. My name is Brent Sabo. I live at 14587 Blue Skies Street. I'd like to read to you a letter that I've wrote. I have emailed it to all of you that are—it is addressed to you, for your record. Dear Mayor Maureen Miller-Brosnan and the Members of Livonia City Council, my name is Brent Sabo, and I am writing this letter to you to open a discussion about the city's road repair program conflict with right-of-way trees. I, along with other Livonia residents, attended a City Council meeting back in May to bring attention to the several right-of-way trees that had been marked for removal on Blue Skies Street between Linden and Five Mile for upcoming road repairs. Concerns over the tree removals led to discussion and eventually consideration of changing or canceling the Blue Skies project in order to preserve the trees. Ultimately, it was decided to continue with the project as planned, based on the expected financial loss of canceling awarded contracts. As a result, 22 healthy, mature trees were erased from Blue Skies Street in a matter of weeks. Mature city right-of-way trees are an asset to our community, so it is a problem that they are being cut down for road repairs. This problem is unsettled, and it is very important to me that we find a resolution together. Trees consume carbon dioxide and create oxygen, cleaning the air we all breathe. Trees provide important shade, they absorb stormwater, reduce noise, and improve mental health. Trees are an effective tool in the fight against climate change. What better than a natural shade canopy and water absorber, as we are all coping with hotter summers and more frequent 100-year rains? As an established community, Livonia is privileged to have a large, mature tree population. With much of the tree population on city right-of-way land, Livonia's residents depend on city officials to responsibly manage the trees around their homes. I am pleased that we have recognized the need for a city tree management plan, and as a result, are working towards a Livonia Tree Ordinance. There is still the problem, however, that the road repair program is cutting down irreplaceable, healthy, mature trees. In just this year, 2021, over 100 of Livonia's right-of-way trees were cut down for road repairs. When presented with the opportunity to save more than 20 of those trees on Blue Skies Street, contractual obligation took priority. While we cannot go back, we have to see where we can learn from our mistakes and do better by making more informed decisions going forward. As a concerned resident of Livonia, I am requesting a deeper look into the 2022 and beyond road repair program. Are changes being made to the plan with respect to right-of-way tree conservation? What exactly is the language in past-year contracts which supported right-of-way tree removal in the first place? And what is needed to influence change to that contract language? These are just some of the questions we need to answer before the contracts for 2022 are approved and history is repeated. This issue is very important to me, and I want to continue to be closely involved. Knowing that there was a possibility to cancel the Blue Skies Road Repair Project, the decision to cut down the trees anyways was especially disappointing. Given that the decision was based on the project contracts already in place, then it follows that the contracts must be changed for future road repair projects. Mature trees are irreplaceable and must be preserved first and foremost. It is unacceptable that healthy, mature trees are being eliminated in significant numbers by the road repair program. We need trees now, more than ever, and the best way forward includes preservation of the trees already here. Now is the time to have a look at the road repair plan for 2022 and beyond. I look forward to working together and developing a more sustainable plan for Livonia's tree population. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sabo. Uh, Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to touch base, Mr. Sabo, as I'm our council representative to the Tree Committee, Mr. Sabo, I think of the last three meetings has—has been a participant as we're discussing a potential tree ordinance. He's been an ally and support on finding the right solution, and I applaud him for that. He does bring up a good point, and this is something I think that, you know, I'm gonna offer in resolution, put this in Committee of the Whole, to just discuss the 2022 road project as it correlates to the tree removal paired with the engineering. I think this is something that can work concurrently with the tree ordinance that's being developed, but it's something that I don't think we should wait another year to take a deeper dive into.
Support. Any discussion? Councilmember Toy and then Vice President Barr.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Mr. Salo also for coming back. Residents come forward a lot of times to us and have some great causes and don't always follow through because of whatever reasons, but you've certainly been on this, and you've done it in a polite, aggressive way, quite frankly. So, I appreciate that, and I think most of us do. And I think it's a very needed kind of look at, and the sensitivity to our community being such a tree community is just outstanding. And we even have, as you know, a Tree Committee on this council that's been alive for years, no pun intended, Madam President. But, in all seriousness, I applaud you and those folks that are on Blue Skies that work diligently. Sometimes it was a challenge for—for some of us and—in our great department had sat, tried to, you know, go through it and see where we were at and what we were doing exactly. But, thank you very much, and hopefully we can take—be preventative rather than reactive rather than—than not. So, I really appreciate you coming forward, and thank you, Mr.—Councilmember McCullough, for offering that.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. Vice President Barr?
Through the chair to Mr. Zalinsik. Todd, just can you refresh us on where we are with that 2022 contract and—and what—if we were to have this discussion, what the appropriate timing would be?
Again, Citizens Advisory Committee meeting. We'll be making the information that's gonna be disseminated to them on Wednesday, and then we bring the mass public in, probably mid to late October, to discuss the program. Then we have to do design, figure out how many trees will be impacted, and then look for that probably in November to bring back to City Council for the design portion. But that's where we're at right now as far as the proposed 22 road repair program for mid to late October with the residents, and then obviously doing our homework to get the cores, look at the trees that could be impacted, and then hopefully correlate that with the tree ordinance that's being, you know, on a parallel track to see if we can— and obviously, we always try to save any trees we can, but work for the Forestry Department hand-in-hand to save those mature trees the best we can.
All right. Thanks. That was my only question, so I will leave it at that, fully intended.
Councilmember Donovan?
Thanks, Madam President. Through the chair to Mr. Zalinsik. So, what you're saying, just to confirm, is that the trees will be identified this year during that October-November period, that meeting, and then those will be the trees that will be torn down for next year? Or next year, as you're driving through the streets, is when you start to identify the trees that have to be removed?
The City Council will approve the design for the roads, but we won't know officially how many trees will be impacted. Again, we're gonna wait for the City Council to approve the budget November 1st. Once that's approved, that'll help us make that decision as far as the—a lot of the street segments, we always try to fit the program to the budget. But I would say by the end of November, we'd have a clear picture of what—what trees would be impacted and the size to provide to the City Council if needed, and then obviously with the Tree Committee, colliding those two items together.
Thanks, Mr. Zalinsik. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the resolution offered by Councilmember McCullough and supported by Councilmember Toy to refer this issue to Committee of the Whole?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the resolution carries, and this item will be placed on to Committee of the Whole. Anyone else wishing to communicate with the council on any item not in this evening's agenda? All right, we'll continue with our agenda. We go to reports from the Mayor and other city officials. We have communication from the Department of Finance dated August 27th, 2021, regarding the forwarding of various financial statements of the city of Livonia for the month ending July 31st, 2021, and is respectfully suggested that the item listed above be received and placed on file for the information of the council. And at this time, we go to the consent agenda, and this evening, items 1 through 6 are listed on the consent agenda, and they're voted on as one item. It doesn't mean that they are any less important than any other items on the agenda, but rather in our study meeting, they were determined not to be controversial in nature.
Move of approval.
I'll second that.
Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on approval of the consent agenda?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. At this time, we continue, and we go to unfinished business. Originally, if—if any of you have a green agenda, it indicates that we were to have a report out from the Committee of the Whole for a meeting on August 25th, 2021, on the subject matter of flooding, infrastructure, and watershed issues, and I had asked that this be removed from this evening's agenda, because I've heard from some residents who were not able to attend the Committee of the Whole meeting, and were not going to be able to be here this evening, and they wanted an opportunity to be able to hear the report out in person. So, we will be covering that at the next meeting, which is Monday, October 4th. So, with that, we move ahead. Unfinished business, item number seven is a roll call vote. This comes to us from the Department of Law. It's a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances, is amended to amend Chapter 13.04, Section 030, using water from fire hydrants, permit cash deposit, and other conditions to increase the meter deposit from $100 to $800. The request was given by Jim Jolly on Wednesday, September 8th, 20—I'm sorry, the first reading was given by Councilmember Jolly at the meeting of Wednesday, September 8th, 2021.
Madam President, I'll offer a second reading at this time.
All right. Are there any comments? Are there any comments from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the—the vote on—the—the roll call vote on this second reading to amend the Code of Ordinances regarding using water from fire hydrants?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the motion carries, and would just like to note that that item will become effective upon publication in the paper. And with that, we move on to item number eight, which is a request to approve Hero Pay Stipend. This comes to us from the Department of Civil Service for regular active full-time and regular active part-time employees, and I would like to refer to the new data that I mentioned. We have a letter from the Mayor's Office addressing questions that were asked in the council meeting of September 8th, and we also have a petition from—it looks like a number, a large number of—and I don't have the count on it, it's numerous pages because it came from multiple departments, but many city employees in support of—in support of this agenda item. Counsel?
Madam President?
Vice President Barr?
I'd like to offer this for Committee of the Whole.
I'll support that, for discussion.
All right.
Madam President?
Yes. Vice President Barr?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'm assuming that our audience tonight is a lot, if not entirely—well, except for Mr. Sabo. City—city employees, maybe some other—oh, Mr. Pastor too, sorry. Former city employee. Anyway, I'm—I'm glad you're all here, so I can just tell you personally how grateful I am for all the work that you did through the pandemic and continue to do for our city. Our city has an excellent employee base. I've said that many times and fast. Over the time that I've worked with the city, many of you have become personal friends of mine, and I certainly don't begrudge you for being in favor of receiving a one-time bonus for the work that you did. And, you know, I saw the names on the petition, I would expect nothing less. I—who wouldn't want that, right? I—I think it's important with something like this, though, that we look back and with some perspective as to where we were in March of 2020. And at that time, maybe not in March yet, at least in March of 2020, I think I still thought I was only gonna be working from home for three weeks. But certainly by the time we got to April and May, there was a lot of angst locally and around the country as to whether jobs were even gonna exist. Many of them didn't. We—particularly in the hospitality industry, we've seen a lot, even in this city. We've seen restaurants close down. I—at—at my company, which is a construction company, I mean, there was a very real question as to what the cash flow was from a month-to-month basis. We are blessed to have a very transparent leadership that was having regular meetings with us and—and letting the employee base know, yeah, we're—we're still okay, we're still okay. But there were real questions as to how long the cash flow was going to hold, to whether people were gonna keep their jobs. And there were a lot of companies where people did not, were not able to keep their jobs. jobs. The point is, everybody endured this pandemic, everybody endured unique challenges, everybody took additional precautions, everybody took on unprecedented risks, everyone made sacrifices, and some lost their jobs. And so, and then when you look from a city perspective, in that environment, I think it's wonderful that that was not the case here. I asked at our study meeting, did anyone lose their jobs during this time? And this mayor who was here speaking to it that night said, well, not unless it was voluntary. I think that's great. I think when I look back, I think the city did a good job of making all necessary accommodations to keep our employees safe. That included, as I recall, I'm not going to try to, I have a number in my head, but that might not be right. But we spent a lot of money on, you know, barriers, on air handlers, on a number of things. Many of you, probably some of you, for, I know for the first time in your careers, were working from home. We accommodated that. I was in some of those early meetings in Council President McIntyre's place where the conversations were being had about how do we put a reasonable policy together in the best interests of our employees during this time? And how do we handle this work from home and pay time off and all those kinds of things? And so I think, and I think we came through that remarkably well. My struggle with this, as I explained last time, is that when you look at this from the taxpayer's perspective, which is the money that we're looking to use for this, regardless of whether it comes locally or federally, this is taxpayer money. You could argue that it's taxpayer money a couple generations from now, but nonetheless, it's taxpayer money. And when we look at this from the taxpayer's perspective, many of whom just wish they had kept their jobs and many of whom are still, myself included, going through the same precautions, the same work-from-home protocols that we have for the last year and a half, it's difficult for me to understand why we would do an across-the-board, one-size-fits-all hero pay when our taxpayers, many of, most of, are not getting the same thing, using other people's money in order to do this here. So that's what my struggle is with this. Now, having said that, since the study meeting and numerous conversations, thinking about it, talking to different business owners around town, and then even just with some of my colleagues here, I do see how there are some cases within the city employee base where I think a pretty strong case could be made for what's being proposed here. But that's not what we have. We have this across-the-board approach that treats everyone, you know, regardless of the situation, regardless of the type of work, regardless of whether he went on furlough, those types of things, treats it all the same. And so the reason why, and I think it was pretty clear from my comments a week and a half ago that I was not in favor of this, I still struggle with it, but it was Councilwoman Toy that originally suggested that we put this into committee. And when she said that, I thought, you know, there's some merit to that. And the more I've thought about it, I think it makes sense because it will allow us to do the appropriate deep dive that I think this thing deserves, to make sure that we approach it fairly, not only for the sake of our employees, but for the sake of our taxpayers. And the other thing that that will allow us to do is it will allow us to look at this within the context of the full $8.9 million that has come to Livonia through that American Rescue Plan. And look at this in the context of other things that might be considered that, so that we can talk about opportunity costs and pros and cons and figure out the best way to delineate this money, or I should say allocate this money, versus taking it with this piecemeal approach that, you know, that has the issues that I already described. So that's my reason, Council President, for suggesting that I go to committee. And with that, I think I'm all set.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Councilmember Jolly and then Councilmember White.
Thank you, Madam President. So I look at this a little bit differently, although I can appreciate the words expressed by my colleague. 2020 was obviously an unprecedented year, but I look at what we did as a city, what you all did as a city, our employees, our people. We kept the wheels of our local government moving. We had multiple elections. We added additional assistance to local businesses through Livonia Cares. We had additional cleaning services provided throughout the city. We, through our employee man-hours and volunteering, ran a vaccination clinic that vaccinated our seniors. Our justice system continued functioning. Our parks and rec system continued functioning. Our inspectors continued inspecting. Our economic development worked with local businesses to keep things going. My hope is that this is voted on and passes tonight. For that reason, I will offer a substitute motion approving this, and I'd look for support.
I'll support.
Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. I totally agree with Councilman Jolly on this. As a community, as a workforce, everyone that was, is an employee went above and beyond. We had a world-class, trailblazing vaccination clinic that took care of a lot of our seniors. You guys had flexible schedules that went beyond normal working parameters that we'll probably never see in most of our lifetimes. The elections, the businesses, the extra cleaning. I also work in a municipal setting. I did receive hazard pay and hero-type pay in my former employer. And then also, I know many communities that are doing the same. I think that a $500 stipend for part-time and a $1,000 stipend for full-time is at the least we can do for all the employees and all the hard work that, we're going the extra mile. So I'll be in full support of hopefully having a vote and having this passed tonight.
Anyone else? Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As was pointed out, we have study meetings, we have regular meetings, this is a regular meeting where we vote. Study meetings are to discuss issues and do some deep dives into them. And if we don't have enough deep dive, then we send it to one of the council committees and/or a Committee of the Whole. My thoughts at that time were to go to Committee of the Whole. This mayor was here and asked her quite a few questions to get my arms wrapped around it because I was kind of hiding, as some of you were or weren't, at the time because of my age and some of my health issues, that I couldn't be out in public real well. So subsequently, as I looked at it, and I also own a small business where I employ about 15 people, full and part-time, we were deemed not to be nonessential, even though people had died or had weddings scheduled within that amount of time. But we had to shut down and do refunds and, right from the get-go, not to get close and personal here, but we did give some bonuses out to our employees so they could survive because they weren't being paid at the time and only one of them applied for unemployment. So subsequently, as I went through this and looked at it, and the money is there. That's what keeps ringing in my ear. The money is there. How we spend that money is up to this council in this administration. And certainly, as taxpayer dollars, and we know that, those are taxpayer dollars, I've got a little bit of a problem with that as we go on in life, but that's okay. It's there now. This is a disease that we've not seen before. It has just, I think I heard on the news today, superseded the amount of deaths that the plague did many years ago. So I had COVID. It's not a pleasant, it's not a pleasant thing to go through, trust me. And subsequently, I don't want any of you to. And whatever protection or whatever you did, I applaud you for. And I applaud the city for standing behind you. Those were very difficult times. The mayor was just elected. It was very scary times. I mean, you know, I had just buried my father and we had a funeral. A week later, we're told to stay home. I mean, those times were very challenging, to say the least. You've stood up and met that challenge for this city, and I appreciate that. And so I will be voting for the substitute motion this evening, even though I did offer Committee of the Whole. But my questions have been answered, my thoughts, and my looking at this issue as a whole has certainly brought this to my decision at this point. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Donovan?
Thank you, Madam President. So in my family's business, I personally give incentive pay to our city employees. Lot smaller business, so we, less than 15 people, as opposed to what we're talking about tonight and the amount of monies we're talking tonight. So I do support an incentive pay for city employees. We're fortunate in Livonia to have hundreds of city employees that work hard every day and are dedicated to our city and have continued to serve our residents. When we saw across the state, hundreds of thousands of employees across the state went on unemployment and those businesses were hurting. Fortunately, here in the city, we handled it well, but we're still spending taxpayer dollars. So I am okay with it going to committee and having a further discussion, talking about it, but I'm also okay with there being incentive pay. I know it's a difficult topic. I mean, you're talking about spending taxpayer dollars and trying to be a good steward of taxpayer dollars. I personally am not happy that the American Rescue Plan, trillions of dollars is being spent, 8.9 million to our city and millions and millions to other cities that we're going to have to figure out how to pay over the course of decades. But the money is here. And like I said in the previous study meeting, I'd rather spend dollars on people than spending on our people than spending dollars on a different project. It's complicated because everybody wants a chunk of the change, so to speak. In my position, I want to make sure that I'm fairly spending that money. In my position, I want to make sure that when we're allocating those dollars, we're doing it in a fair manner. So I'm okay with having more discussions. I think that every dollar we spend of this $8.9 million should have very in-depth discussion about how we spend it and where we spend it. So I support committee hearing to talk more about that, having dialogue and having those discussions, but I also do support incentive pay. So whether, however it goes tonight, I just want to say thanks to all the city employees and to the residents and to all of us that have to pay that money back over the next how many years. That's a discussion we're going to continue to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember White?
So I am in support of the original resolution to send this to committee, but based on my background as a city employee for almost 30 years, I know how hard the city employees work. I know their dedication to the city under normal circumstances. So when the pandemic hit and they still rose to the occasion as usual, number one, I wasn't surprised, and number two, very grateful both as a resident of the city and as somebody who, you know, has worked with a lot of the people, many of the people here in this room and many of the people who would be the beneficiary of the hero pay that's being proposed. The city employees are essential workers. And I don't know how those who had young children at home and were expected to get their work done at home, I don't know how they did it. I had three kids of my own. I don't know how families did it, but they did. And I think ultimately, my sympathies are with the city employees and I will probably ultimately vote in favor of this proposal. However, as long as any of my colleagues have questions or uncomfortable with moving forward at this point, at this meeting, for respect for my colleagues, I don't have any, any problem sending this to committee to talk about it and to study it a little bit further and hopefully get anyone's questions answered and get everybody on the same page with having the comfort level of going forward with this. So I just don't want my, my vote on the original resolution to be misunderstood because I am very supportive of this proposal, but I'm also, out of respect for my colleagues, I would like to see this also, any questions get answered in committee. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anyone from the audience? And this is discussion on the substitute resolution.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And I understand it's discussion on the motion to substitute. I do want to take this opportunity, though, to talk a little bit about why the motion to approve is one that I support, obviously, as the mayor of the city who brought the proposal to you. Normally, it would be Denise Mayer who was standing here before you tonight making this pitch, but she's at Mapers protecting our retirement program, so I'm pitch hitting tonight for her. First of all, let me start by thanking Councilwoman Toy, Councilman Jolly, and Councilman McCullough for the conversations that we had during the course of the week. You really did understand completely and re-energize in me that understanding of exactly why our employees need to be recognized for the work that they did through this pandemic. This is not complicated. The word we hear most often associated with the pandemic and with the issue of worker compensation is that we are working through a time of unprecedented changes. It is often the word that is used to describe the acts of employees. It is often the word that is used to describe how they stepped up to the challenge. And that is the case here in the city of Livonia. So this is my chance to brag, and I am not going to let it slide. I am so proud of our team of Livonia city employees, and I know all of you are too. So let's take that as a given. Some of them are here tonight. I so appreciate you taking the time to be here to support not only what we're asking for this evening for yourselves, but for your colleagues. I think that is important. You are the heart and the soul of this community. You were there. These people were here making sure that things moved forward for our residents, making sure that Livonia was a safer community, keeping many of our programs operating in extremely creative and new ways, ways that we're going to continue to operate under. Never has dedication, resilience, care, compassion been more appreciated than during this pandemic. Months ago, the leadership team started to take a look at how we were best going to recognize the dedicated efforts of our city employees. And the finance director, Mike Slater, shared an article that started out by saying, quote, "Bosses aren't taking the great resignation wave seriously." And then the article goes on to warn that first, the first time in a generation, the balance of power in the workplace is shifting to workers. As a result, our department heads have been talking over the course of months about how we are going to spend more time practicing what we are calling the attitude of gratitude. So department heads are really working to thank our employees, to make sure that the work that they do is recognized, to make sure that the stress levels that they are operating under are recognized. My office in particular is spending time in each department, recognizing those moments of triumph individually in departments that oftentimes may go unnoticed. And you have all even joined in that, too, in recognizing our custodial workers. And I so want to thank you for that proclamation. I was down in the basement the other day and one of the custodians mentioned it to me again, what a proud moment that was for them, that they were recognized by the city council. These are all important-
Mayor, would you like additional time?
I didn't realize I had a time limit.
It's audience communication.
Normally-
Please continue.
I so appreciate that. These are all important elements in developing a culture of recognition in a city, a culture that goes to recognizing loyalty and mitigating burnout and making people feel valued, which is extremely important in this day and age, and I know you all know that. Last year, there were funds available through the state of Michigan that recognized the work of our first responders. Now, funds are available through the American Rescue Plan to recognize the work of those who are frontline service workers. And tonight, we're asking you to allocate $500 for part-time employees, $1,000 for full-time employees who've continued to service our residents and our business community in one of the communities hardest hit by the pandemic. We can't ever forget that. We struggled more than most communities did. This evening gives me a chance, and with the benefit of some additional time, to recognize some of the very specific things that were done, things that I think are amazing. The custodial staff, who you may recall when the pandemic hit, were in two to three times a day wiping down surfaces that at the time, we didn't know if it carried a contaminant or not. But they went in and they did it anyway. The water department, the road crews who were riding around the city, two in a truck before we were masking up, before we were using hand sanitizer, continuing to do the work to make sure that the city remained operating, especially through emergencies. The inspection department who walked into people's homes, walked into businesses, walked onto job sites before being vaccinated, before, again, we knew about the art and the importance of masking up. They were in there taking those kinds of risks. There were employees in 20 different departments, over 100 of them, that stepped up to make sure that Livonia residents got vaccinated. One out of every five Livonia residents got vaccinated through that program, thanks to the help of not only our fire department, but over 100 employees from 20 different departments. This was a team effort, a team effort that extended into the election, a team effort that made 13 departments send 134 employees to help us manage a historic number of ballots, while at the same time, tens of thousands of people were walking through the first floor of City Hall. And we continued to conduct business in an environment prior to knowing how important it was to be vaccinated, prior to having a vaccine. Yes, we did our very best to keep our employees safe, but yes, they did put themselves at times at considerable risk. Many of them worked from home during the pandemic, but they continued to provide the same level of service to our, to our residents as if they were working here in the city. Libraries, parks employees, senior center employees, green meat staff are all phenomenal examples of that. They created some of the most innovative work that we've seen in this city in the past 10 years, putting new programs- 10 years, putting new programs together that are now operating virtually and are going to continue to operate virtually. And all the while, many in the workforce have remained at home, have remained in off-site locations, have not come back to their office. This city team came back a year ago, well before many other organizations sent their employees back. They were back at their desks, they were back in the field, they were back in homes, they were back in libraries and senior centers and at Green Meat and at the Parks and Rec Department, making sure that this community was functioning at some level, giving people the resources that they need. This hero stipend that we're talking about is only 4% of the American Rescue Plan dollars that are intended to come to the city, and I do highly encourage you to put the subject matter of the American Rescue Plan money and how we spend it into committee. I think that is a worthy effort. But putting this subject, the bonus for these employees into committee, with the intent that somehow we're going to find a better way to parcel it out, that is not the best use of our time. That is not the best use of our ability, our opportunity, to instill in a workforce of 635 employees, our thanks, our gratitude. Putting it in committee is, it's a delay, it's a stall tactic, because we already talked about this. Divvying it up any other way than this is an impossibility, given the criteria that we have to meet working with our unions. It's an all or none option. We can't pick and choose winners in this environment. So I really, I would encourage you tonight to consider passing this. I think you've gotten a lot of information presented to you in advance of this meeting. We've answered all of your questions, I believe. We went through the tape, tried our best to make sure that we answered all of the questions that you had at the last meeting, and so I'm asking you to join me, the Livonia Civil Service Commission, and the department heads, the leaders of this community, in really helping to advance that next phase in practicing the attitude of gratitude and rewarding our city employees for the hard, unprecedented work that they've contributed. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? And this is on the substitute motion.
Hi, my name is Erica Flores. My address is 33034 Benson, Westland. I've been fortunate enough to be a city employee for over 22 years. I have seen us step up above and beyond all our employees through many things, including Y2K, 9/11, the cascade outage of 2003, and again in this pandemic. However, I don't think anybody has ever been so uncertain as in this time. Our employees have done jobs that they were never intended to do. They've rose to the occasion, and if you ask them again, regardless of what you guys decide tonight, they would do it again, and I know that from all the years I've been here. I just want you to take this into consideration when you vote either on this or take it back to your consent. The willingness and ability of the city employees, in a time of turmoil, these employees provided services that the residents were used to, and in a time of turmoil, there is some comfort in that, that they provided to the residents when questioning tax dollars. That has to count for something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Good evening.
Good evening. Ed Hoffman, 36090, he's a 24-year employee, lifelong city resident. I really don't understand why this decision is so hard for you. Take COVID out of the mix. You either appreciate your city services and your city employees, or you don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sammy Lovin. I am the maintenance supervisor for the city of Livonia. I am not a Livonia resident. I'm not really sure. This is my first time speaking. I just wanted to say that the thought for not giving the hero pay, I'm not, I don't understand very well, but whenever you do think about that, think about the custodians who are in here every day. They're keeping everything clean, they're keeping it sanitized. They've been here through the whole pandemic. Pretty much during the pandemic, they've sanitized, and when people have caught COVID, it was not from the city buildings. It was not from the being in the buildings for the people who were, or at PD, or at Fire, where the custodians all did their sanitizing. They worked very hard at keeping the city from, well, the city employees safe, basically. And I am not understanding the reason why you wouldn't even consider or why you're even having to think about it, because, and I'm just speaking for the custodians here, that the amount of effort it took just to keep the city COVID-free, the city employees COVID-free, was just a fabulous job they did. And I'm still at a loss at why you would even have to think very hard about that, and that's not including what the rest of the city workers did. But that's really, I just wanted to let you speak for the custodians because they don't get a lot of fanfare. They're the least of us, and they don't get spoken for. So the mayor did a fabulous job. I wasn't even going to speak, but I wanted to just throw my hat in there for the custodians.
Thank you. Very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Donell Hoffman, 36090, he's. I'm also a city employee as well as lifelong resident of this city. Mayor, thank you very much, and she pretty much covered everything I was going to say. So there's just a couple of points that I wanted to make, just because I'm a newer employee, I haven't been here as long as my husband. I came from private business. So my confusion is, unlike private businesses who are allowed to show their employees monetary appreciation such as a time like this when they want, they don't have to come to a city council to get this approved. Our mayor would like to do this, unfortunately, with funds earmarked specifically for, this is one of the reasons. I've read the list. This is a specific reason that the cities can give back to their employees that worked during this time. So I am urging the city council members to approve the mayor's request to use just that small portion of those funds that were federal funds. We've all paid for it. I agree with Donavick. I would have preferred that the earned income tax credit be reduced for those that continued working. It didn't work out for those, you know, we didn't all get our way. So we have the funds. It's allotted to the city for the purpose of giving back. Every employee that was here at the beginning of COVID that's still here today kept this city operating in one of the most challenging times that the city has had. Since the start of COVID, the city employees have put their physical well-being at risk to meet the daily needs of our community, some even contracted COVID and taking it home to their families, such as our situation. We came to work here, most likely got it from work, and our family ended up with it. You know, these are the things that everyone in this room, all the employees that couldn't make it tonight, each have a story, all a little bit different, but all of this affected all of us, whether it was a financial burden, a mental burden, and I really hope that this does not go to committee and that you can vote on this tonight in our favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Shamika Bowes, 20075 Seminole, Redford, Michigan. I wasn't going to say anything, but I just felt very compelled. Pardon my composure, I may be a little emotional. So I've heard what everyone has said, and I personally, I just sat in my seat and I'm like, I think I have a lot of integrity and loyalty that I've given over my last nine years, working for the city of Livonia. And over the last year, year and a half really, it has been a challenge. I have four children. I lost my father over this past year. I survived COVID, and I had four children, one young adult who graduated with her masters during this time, one who graduated from eighth grade, one who graduated from elementary, and one preschooler. My kids attend Clarenceville, and I just feel as though we are very deserving of this as a city employee, and I would think that you all would appreciate our loyalty and our diligence and how, no matter what we were enduring ourselves, we still were committed to the community and to the residents in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jennifer Schilk, 36345 Jameson. I'm a city employee for four years, and I was born and raised in Livonia. I lived elsewhere for a bit, and I came back, and now I'm raising my family here. And I just kind of wanted to touch on, Mr. Barr, when you said we were accommodated as employees throughout all of this, it's true, absolutely, and I'm so grateful to the city, but we accommodated the city, too. We were not ready for a remote work environment, and we made that work. My team specifically, it's me and four other women. I'm from water billing, and I'm a bit nervous, so.
Don't be nervous, you're doing great.
Thank you. We, for instance, we didn't have the equipment or the infrastructure to work from home, and we made it work on, I think, a week's notice, if that, maybe two days. And when we lost two of our very valuable staff members temporarily to furlough, services never were interrupted, were never slowed down. My, the person in billing got the bills out on time every time. Our ladies who record the payments recorded those payments on time. From a citizen, from a resident and taxpayer perspective, I don't think they could even tell that anything was different. So the city was very accommodating to us, and I was pregnant throughout the pandemic, and I'm very grateful to my boss and whoever else let it happen, that I could work from home sometimes, but the bottom line is, is the city is not set up to work from home, and I understand that, and I'm grateful for my job. So I also came in at least half of that time towards the end of my pregnancy, if not more. And that's a scary thing, and it was scary for everybody else, too, healthy, not pregnant, pregnant, anything. So again, I don't think I'm bringing anything new.
Madam Chair, the two minutes ago.
I don't think I'm bringing anything new, but I think you should vote on this tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President.
Mr. Barr.
If that's everybody that wanted to speak, I just feel compelled to speak because, obviously, I'm probably the least popular guy in the room right now. First of all, not just the mayor, who definitely has gifts in speaking, we all know that, but everybody. That was very compelling, and I applaud, beginning with the mayor and through everybody else, well-delivered, well-thought-out, understand every piece of it. In particular, I just was making some notes here. First of all, Mayor, thank you for just acknowledging that we are all proud of the job our employees have done. I think that is absolutely true. Second of all, I was delighted to hear, you just, in fact, would love some time to hear more about it, but just about the conversations you're having with your department heads. I don't know what all that entails, but beyond what you said here, but we've had discussions, it's been mentioned several times even in recent weeks here on other issues, that there's other things, pay is important, but there's other things beyond pay that make for a positive work environment, and I trust that that's a lot of what you're talking about. I think that's wonderful. Look, I said last time, it's the easiest thing is to sit up here and smile and say yes. And trust me, like, my heart right now is going, man, I want to just jump all over this thing. The thing that is just difficult for me is, while everything you said was, I really don't have any disagreement with any of the factors that anybody said, the thing is, every single one of them applies to everybody in the private sector as much as it does in the public sector, everybody. I didn't hear a single, because I was listening for it, I didn't hear a single thing. This doesn't take away from what was done. What it does is it just, it reinforces how everybody stepped up. And I just think it's unfortunate that because our federal legislators write a bill the way they do, that they create this divide where something is available for this group of people, that the taxpayers are going, wait a minute, that applies here, too. And I just, I struggle with that. It would be fun to vote yes on this right now, but that's the thing that I struggle with. And my job, you know, I'm not elected here to do what feels fun. I'm not elected here to do what feels politically expedient in the moment. I'm elected here to do what is in the best interest of our taxpayers and of our community as a whole, and that's the struggle that I have. So I, even some of the comments that I heard just about ultimately being supportive of this, but supporting and going to committee, you know, I'm not making any promises one way or another where I end up on this, other than I think you heard me say earlier that I see merits for this in some areas. I just think there are more things to talk about for me to better understand, to make sure that we're approaching this fairly, just this broad-brush, one-size-fits-all approach. So I'm sure, I probably didn't persuade anybody, I'm sure there's a lot, and probably everybody here that disagrees with me, but I at least want you to understand, hopefully you can at least understand the rationale where I'm coming from, even if you don't agree with it.
Madam Chair. Yes, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you very much. I want to remind the council and our audience that on May 11th of 2020, the subject matter of COVID-19 went to the committee that Donavick and McCullough and I are on the Health and Public Safety and Environment Committee. That language is in there. So basically, we do have that already in a committee, and that's something I realized when I called Sarah right before the meeting. I said, is that still in that committee? And I know that we had the mayor in and several department heads, correct me if I'm wrong, fellow committee members, back when, back when we didn't know a lot of the kinds of things that were happening with COVID. We kind of put it in there so that the council would have a check of balance with the administration and to work with the administration as well to look at this horrid kind of events that we were having that nobody could get their, you know, we weren't sure how to get our arms around it. So I just wanted to remind council, that is in a committee already, unless you want to, I don't know, change it, however you want to handle it. Thank you.
Councilmember Toy, could you please clarify and tell us exactly what is in the committee?
The subject matter, it's pretty general, Madam Chair, because I think, you know, as we looked at it in those days, it was May 11th of 2020. The wording is a subject matter of COVID-19 to committee for further discussion, and that's basically what it says. It was pretty open-ended because it was a while back.
Madam President.
Yes.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So although I respect the opinions of my colleagues up here, and I can't fault anybody for having an opinion, as I sit up here, the way I look at my job on the city council is my job is to do my best for our community and also for our employees and to make sure that we're all on the same page and we're providing a service to the community. I started working for the city as an intern quite some time ago, and one of the reasons I'm up here now and still involved in the community is because this is a family. The way that you all approach your work for the community, for the city, with each other, there is something special going on here, and I want to make sure that we take care of the work that you've done, the risk that you put yourself in. And I tried to list off all the things that happened, and the mayor did a much better job and more eloquently, as she always does. But I want to, like I said earlier, I want to take care of this tonight, I want to take care of all of you tonight and reward you for the work and the effort that you put forth, because it's due and it's appropriate and it's just. So thank you all. Look at me, thank you all for all the work that you've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Jolly. Anyone else? Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Touching base, one of the speakers did mention, you know, differences in the private sector compared to public, and it's one of those things that I fully agree with, is I also work on the other side of the dais, just as you guys do, for municipal work, and you're absolutely correct. For performance increases and raises and bonus incentives, those really don't usually happen in the municipal setting. And going back to COVID, when you pair that with running a city and the city services, whether it's getting the water bills out, whether it's doing the election, whether it's electrostaticing all of the chairs and tables, putting up these shields and keeping the city, one thing we always used to say is, you know, working in municipal government is always like flying a plane, and you can really never land it, you just got to keep going. And for you guys to be able to do that during a pandemic is remarkable. And for you guys to be able to do that during a pandemic is is remarkable. And again, I'll step back and, you know, fully, hopefully support this tonight. I think that a $500 and $1,000 stipend is the least we can do. And again, I echo my colleagues to say thank you to each and every one of you. I know there's many at home that are watching, thank you for everything.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Anyone else?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President. So I just want to make one thing clear, me supporting having just discussions about it is not a stall tactic. When you're talking about spending $373,000, it's it's not about stalling, it's just about having discussions. I don't think that there's anything wrong with giving $500 to part-time employees and and $1,000 to full-time employees. Again, me and my personal workplace, we've done that, and I support the hero pay and support incentive pay for employees. I just come from the mindset, I like to have discussions before we spend taxpayer dollars. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you for your indulgence again. I, that's why I said at the beginning, this is now a voting meeting, we have those studies, that's where we study issues, unless we put it into a committee for further study. And since it's already in a committee, depending on what this council deems to do, I just want to thank everyone as well, and we appreciate your work. I appreciate the fire, the police, DPW, all of you that work in the different offices. Obviously, you have families, many of you, and as was said, you go home, and during an uncertain time, as others have pointed out, we we were facing a very risky time. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go over and over, obviously, we all thank you so much, and the money is there. If the money wasn't there, you know, we we might have to look at other things, but the money is there and it's and it's noted to be spent. So let's spend it, let's all be happy, and let's all see if we can give a little bit to some other people that do work around the city as well, if if indeed you want to make some type of donation to someone, that would be nice too. And many of you have already done that, I'm sure. We do it every day. So, thank you again and again for all your work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to pass the gavel if you're done, Mr. Vice President. Thank you. First of all, I owe the mayor an apology for suggesting you were subject to audience communication time. I was not thinking, and I was surprised to see you here tonight, it's very nice to have you here, and I'm sorry I interrupted you. I also don't, what, everything we heard tonight was very compelling, the mayor is very, very compelling in her points, very passionate about this. I know she's given it a lot of thought. Ever, everything we heard tonight was also very compelling, and I don't disagree with everything that's been said about the incredible nature of our employees and what they do. I would like an additional opportunity to look at, to look at by department, how we're spending this money, and just feel comfortable that this is absolutely the best way to do it. And I know that the mayor indicated there's no other way to do it, but I have some additional questions regarding other ways to do it, and I don't want to belabor those this evening. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Donavick.
Just for, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just for procedural-wise, going to committee, when do those committee meetings take place? Is that two weeks from now, or is that depending upon the schedule from the council manager?
It's it's at the president's prerogative when the schedule, committee, whoever chairs the committee, so I believe I offered it for committee the whole, so that'd be the council president.
Okay. Thanks, Madam, Mr. President, Vice President.
May I?
Yeah.
Address that question. Councilmember Donavick, and I know we heard tonight that these are stalling techniques, and I think I had this discussion recently with one of my colleagues who suggested putting something into committee of the whole to stall it, and I expressed that I look at committee of the whole and committees very differently, and I've never used committee of the whole or suggested committee of the whole to stall anything. Things go into committee of the whole, and we move on them very quickly, so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Donavick.
Not to be back and forth, I apologize. So then, if that's the case, then, the very next council meeting, we could, after more questions are asked, could this be scheduled for the very next council meeting? Or is that again dependent upon scheduling and agenda items, finalization, whatnot?
Go ahead, Madam President.
I I'm really not the the person to answer this, I'm going to let, I'm actually defer to Sarah, because this is more appropriate for her to answer and explain why it would be, given the timing and agenda requirements, why we could not hear it at the next council meeting, but perhaps at the council meeting after that.
Based on the timing, I don't think that it would work for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
I'll just, oh, go ahead, Madam.
No, I was just going to say, that said, I'll be happy to schedule this meeting as soon as we can have a quorum together, if should we end up with that.
I was just going to lend my support to what you said, Madam President, just about, but when I, when I was on planning commission, I remember when Mark would come back to our meetings and report back on what council had done, and when something had gone to committee, there was always kind of like a, because it was kind of seen as just that goes there to die, and that has definitely not been the case with this council, and I applaud our council president for that. My my meeting calendar shows that things don't linger in committee long here, so. Council, any other comments or questions on this? Yeah, Councilwoman McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to go on record, when we do talk about committee of the whole, I think it would be wise to review what's currently in committee of whole and how long that they've stayed, maybe, you know, on a on a subject, or, you know, take it offline to see how long things have sat. There are a few items that have been there for some time that we haven't brought up, just like to clarify that.
Councilwoman White.
For, from my perspective, I would be urging that this matter go to committee if if there's support for, if there's a majority vote for this to go to committee of the whole, I would be pushing to get this heard in committee as soon as possible and get it reported out as soon as possible. My goal here is not to delay anything, it's to get questions answered and to get everybody on the same page with a comfort level and moving forward. Thank you.
Madam, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Toy.
Sorry. I I'm not real sure what more we're going to hear in committee of the whole. We do have it in a committee, the whole question of COVID, I don't know, maybe maybe because I'm pretty clear about, we have money, they're proposing 500 for part-time, 1,000 for full-time, and all due respect to my colleagues, I I don't know what else we need to discuss, and if members feel compelled, I'm ready to vote on the substitute motion if we could, and because we've got another meeting we've got to have, and it's important, this is very important, but I think we've heard testimony from some of the audience members, our mayor, and most of us, so, you know, I would call for the vote.
We'd ask that you not, we typically ask the audience not applaud, so, we we know you support that, though, so. I'm ready to go do a vote too, but I just want to make sure there aren't any outstanding questions, okay?
Substitute motion.
Right. So what we're voting on is the substitute motion, which was the motion to, well, no, right now, we're just voting on to substitute, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I see the city attorney nodding his head. So, this is the motion to substitute, if this were to pass, we would then consider that substitute motion.
Correct.
Go back to the original motion. So then, the motion to substitute, Madam Clerk, would you please, please call the rule.
Do we need a motion maker for a substitute?
We had one. We had Mr. Jolly offering a substitute motion.
And Mr. McCullough.
McCullough supported.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick? Councilmember Jolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Toy?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
No.
President McIntyre?
No.
Vice President Barr?
No, so the motion to substitute passes, and with that, I, do I ask to entertain a motion now? To entertain the substitute motion, or?
It's on the floor.
It's on the floor.
Oh, so it is on the floor with the, so Mr. Jolly's motion, which, you want to just clarify what that was, Mr. Jolly?
My motion is to proceed as requested to approve the hero pay and to be thankful while doing it. I'd like a supporting motion.
I'll support.
You can pass it to.
Yeah, we got.
Excuse me, Paul?
Yes.
Do you want me to ask just to keep this?
No.
Okay, Madam President, go ahead.
No, no, I was going to ask.
Yeah, I know, go ahead. Please do.
Is Mr. Barr able to pass, is the order of the gavel to get passed to the seniority?
This would be a first for me.
Is he able to pass the gavel?
It should stay, it should stay as long as the, while this issue is on the table, it should stay with Mr. Barr.
If I wanted to speak at this point on this subject, can I pass it or not? It, just, I'm just.
And then, yeah, then it's.
Okay, this is, this is a first.
Because, yeah, I know.
In my six years on council.
Since since the president passed it to you on this issue, if you're going to pass it, then it'll pass to the senior member.
Okay, then in that case, that would be the person who.
By term of years, not by age.
That would be the person who just celebrated her 20-year high school graduation.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I'm going to pass the gavel, I've never seen this done before, but I am going to pass it to the gavel, just because I want to say that being where we are right now, I do, out of respect for the employees, and to reiterate what I said earlier about my gratefulness for what they've done, you've all heard my concerns with this, but it's pretty clear what's going to happen at this point. And and I think this is one of those things that it's nice to, I I I think it'd be nice if there's a unanimous vote on this, and so I will join with that.
Any others? Sorry, I forgot, Sarah. Anybody else wishing to, before we take the vote? If not, Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick?
Yes.
Councilmember Jolly?
Yes.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. I'm passing back the gavel.
It depends what you want to do. It depends what you want to do. All right, we'll give everyone a minute to to clear out. Thank you to all the employees who took the time to be here tonight. All right, moving ahead with new business. Item number 10 is a request for additional appropriation and expenditure. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for the construction engineering for the drinking water revolving fund, known as DWRF, DWRF, number 7452-01, project areas 1 and 3 and project area 2, to close out the contract with OHM Advisors, in amount not to exceed $323,000, and the new total not to exceed amount of $917,800. This is Council Resolution 133-20. Council.
Madam President, I'll offer an approving resolution.
All right, we have a, we have a motion support.
Yeah, support.
Yeah, Mr. Zalinsik, did you have anything?
Nope, just some, all set, just formality here, thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone have any comments? Anyone from the audience wishing to comment on this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll call vote?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously, so, Mr. Zalinsik, you have your appropriation and expenditure. Number 11 is also request for additional appropriation expenditure, Engineering Division for the 2020 Concrete Road Program, Contract 20C, to close out the contract with Hard Rock Contract Incorporated, amount not to exceed $225,000, and the new total not to exceed $5 million.
Madam President, or I I think we skipped one, 10, right? Was that 11?
I'm, my my agenda is numbered incorrectly, so, what I, what I just read was not, the first one was nine, right?
Yes.
My agenda, my agenda's misnumbered. The one we just did was nine.
She's reading 10.
We're on number 10, I'm on the correct.
Yeah, she's on the correct.
But thank you, Mr. McCullough.
Yeah, she just said.
Number 10, number 10.
Gotcha.
For the record, number 10, request for additional appropriation expenditure, Engineering Division for the 2020 Concrete Road Program, Contract 20C, to close out the contract with Hard Rock, Hard Rock Concrete Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $225,000, and the new total not to exceed $5,025,000. This was Council Resolutions 103-20 and 228-20. Council.
Second.
Support from Jolly, any discussion, anyone from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the, take the vote?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye.
Item number 11 is a request for additional appropriation and expenditure, this comes to us also from the Engineering Division, for the construction engineering and the 2020 Concrete Road Program, Contract 20C, to close out the contract with Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick Incorporated AEW, in an amount not to exceed $27,000, and the new total not to exceed $605,000. These were Council Resolutions 104-20 and Council Resolution 229-20.
So move.
Support.
Support from White, any comments? Mr. McCullough, anyone else? Anyone from the audience? All right, would you please take the vote?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the motion carries, and the additional appropriation expenditure approved, this time we go back to the audience, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to communicate with the council on any item not in the season's agenda, now's an opportunity to do so. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Madam Chair, support.
Toy and Barr? Excuse me, oh my God. Yes, sir?
Oh, is this an opening for the audience?
For the, for the regular meeting.
I had, I don't know if this is a regular meeting, but I just, I had some concerns about some things I'm seeing in the city.
Okay.
Okay. This will be real quick.
Wait, now that we closed, we should wait till the study.
Right.
Sir, we're going to start the study meeting in 10 minutes, and we have audience communication at the beginning of that, and I'm sorry I didn't.
That's okay, I didn't understand it.
So, but if you just give us 10 minutes, you will be welcome to come and talk to us at the beginning of audience communication at the study meeting, so very sorry about that.